Before I forget, next month I will not be here, will be on vacation.
I will too.
Alright.
I'm getting married on the 14th, so.
Oh, congratulations.
Unless something changes.
Yeah, don't want to have that surprise.
We may not have a meeting because as it plays out right now. I mean, it's serendipitous, but. But no, man, it just happens to be the nature of commercial development right now.
We must be out of warehouse space.
No, we actually met with somebody about that, about a big project about for that too. Coincidentally.
It's unbelievable, all the demand, and there's more, there's more people looking for warehouse space. There's, I got a business in the city that just can't, I mean, they just can't keep moving trucks in and out of the city. And they've been desperately trying to find warehouse space and everywhere they either get outbid or.
Well, Mike O'Brien's team is going to start, they're going to be recording their plan for Phase Six in Brookside, which is the industrial building here shortly.
Oh, on the backside of that property?
Seven oh one is gonna, they are recording their plan this week and gonna get their building permit next week. And it's, I'm sure seven ninety-one, there's a few things, they were focused on seven oh one as a priority.
Shoot, I planted corn in there.
But we, I can't say who it was.
The farmer, the farmer called in and said, you know what, and he said, I'll get back to you. And, and then we waited like a month and then Mike said, yeah, I think you can do it or something, you can plant it.
Now, that's just recording a plan, but.
Who knows?
Most likely by the time they're ready, the corn will be harvested.
The corn will be gone anyways.
But um, the, the property that Sam Byler owns.
Oh, over on two eighty-three there, yeah.
Yeah, we met with a developer that has a.
That, is that commercial or what do we call it?
It's ag hold, the specific area is ag holding.
Is that still ag holding?
But they have a plan in place, or they, they have an option to complete, to buy out the residential properties. I gotta be careful because we're recording.
Oh, yeah, don't say.
But it's a substantial, it would be a substantial.
Enterprise and kind of use then?
Enterprises or RCC or CBC.
Okay, good.
Because I hate to just make it enterprise because it is right there at the interchange.
Why the interchange?
Enterprise fits because the NOC is enterprise, so. But um, yeah, it's a fairly substantial project. It's gonna require, when we met with them, they were fully aware and on. And know that they are going to have substantial investment in traffic and road improvements.
They know our water capacity is pretty low over that.
I told them, reach out to Lassa because supposedly Lassa fixed the sewer issue back over there.
Sewer, but what about our water? Because.
I told them to reach out to Hempfield Water as well. It should be, it should be fine because it should have been all dealt with when Hempfield Water got approval to buy, purchase capacity from Lexington City.
I just know that, that corner there, the water authority was saying was a problem for them.
And Vanessa had to, it was him and S.B. Conrad, who became the money behind the Tobacco Road project. S.B. Conrad paid for the upgrades to the sewer line that were running through Lanusville up to.
Really? Man, I wouldn't have thought that project was big enough to pay all that.
It's going nowhere. We haven't, they have not done anything, there have been no inspections, no building inspections, no site inspections, nothing.
And so they're not working on it that you know? Oh, wow. But he paid the cost of the, wow. Glad I'm not financing that one.
Well, that project's been a mess.
They're hard to finance.
Well, they wanted, they wanted to do market rate condos right next to the rail line.
Is that what they wanted to do then?
Yep.
Okay.
And our zoning law officer is no longer with us, we have a new one. Colin had a better opportunity, a step up in his career. He's now the director of planning for, he will be the director of planning for Eastland Peter Township.
Oh, okay.
So Danny will probably be working with him over there. Hello. Steve and.
Terry.
Terry, thank you. Before we get started, I've already informed these two gentlemen. One of our planning commission members emailed me this morning. He astutely saw on the sketch plan that the handicap spaces that are shown, reduction from four to two, does not correspond with our, with the ADA requirements. So the, the plan will need to, need to be updated or revised to show a minimum of three handicap spaces with one of those being banned accessible.
Good evening.
Yeah, it was fun.
Can you catch it when you were down there?
No, 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 no.
Good evening.
How are you?
Doing good.
What, you didn't go to anything?
I know, I went, I went down to South Beach. We were there just at the beginning of spring break, so just when the crowds were starting to get there. And I think there were some bikers and stuff like that, you know, some biker groups in the city. But yeah, like the second to last day there, you know, just the local news, just like you're arresting a car.
I thought of you, I said, oh, I hope he doesn't get himself into a messed up. As long as you have a good time. The last time he was here, he was leaving to go to Florida right after. Months ago.
Actually, this weekend, I'm going camping.
Well, that's safe.
Yeah.
Except for fees and tax.
But in my, there's some property down there.
Isn't it to be decent weather? Like two weekends ago, it was freezing cold. Last weekend it was.
I have the existing conditions, I have the proposed conditions, I have the demo plan and the landscaping.
Dan, nice to meet you.
Doing well?
Good to meet you.
Evening, how you doing?
Yes, thanks a lot for me to Cindy.
Absolutely.
She had to deal with my husband on that. But it took them three more times.
Really?
After he talked to her, they came, they had two huge trucks that they couldn't get up the driveway to get to the home.
Yeah, I was thinking there should be a spot here somewhere for you.
Third time is when they finally.
Oh, my goodness. You can't get good help these days. You can't get good help these days.
I don't know what their problem is.
Hey Matt.
Windstorm came through.
Good.
It took down my neighbor's tree and they came across her driveway and took down the streetlight drop.
But it didn't hit your house?
No, no, it was across her driveway. Pete and, Pete and the neighbor beside her went down and cut all the limbs off. Got it moved so she could get her car in. But they called three times that day, but it was when everything was going on. Finally came down and they put stop there and parked there and looked. Next thing you know, they're walking down my driveway. We heard there was a toll booth, I said, oh, it's a street light. So I said, two more times, come on, look at it. They finally send a small truck, they could get up the driveway crying.
I'm sure it'll go through court, but I just saw another thing where they're, they're afraid. Guess what it is now is for federal funding.
Stop this truck, he got out and he says, I don't have the right stuff on me, this is the guy I hired the first time. I haven't wanted to see.
Maybe they're not good enough.
A little inefficient.
There's always an excuse.
Yeah, exactly. Good evening. Doing good.
Nita's playing. She's playing bocce.
Good.
Yeah.
Needs to get out.
Oh, you should volunteer to get on a team.
I haven't played that in years. I haven't played in years.
Time to start.
We have.
It's true.
On Nita's team, Judy and John, I think his name, she was president of the league over ten years ago. They were one of the family members of the league and they're back playing now after ten, over ten years.
Well, you know, the courts downtown are named after my cousin. The one in Buchanan Park were named after my cousin.
Yeah, yeah, we just played their last three.
Those are nice.
Nobody likes playing there, I like playing.
I thought they were.
Because it's quirky.
Well, where do you play? Maybe I will sign up.
We're playing tomorrow night down here.
I might show up. You embarrass me though.
I figured, I told you that you'd actually show up, Matt, I knew that. You know, spectators are welcome. Spectators are welcome.
It's fun to watch though. It's fun to watch, it's just fun to play too.
Well, we're playing, who are we playing? Oh, Pizanos, I don't remember who they are. There's twenty-three teams tonight in the league.
I've got a friend that's got a second home down in Little Italy, Baltimore.
Oh, yes.
They have a serious, serious bocce, like lanes, stadium, bleacher seats.
Well, yeah.
The place to hang out on an evening.
It would be that big down there, but we're getting okay here, I mean, we're just two hundred and forty players, plus people on reading lists to get on teams. We luckily canceled last night because of the rain.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't want to play, we were playing it overlooking, they have four courts, none of it is, there's no shade, no shade whatsoever.
Evening.
Where's the ones that over? Ann.
Yeah, I was just thinking, where are the?
Where's the ones that over? I don't remember them.
Baseball, baseball fields are. You'll pass the dog or you keep going and keep going and all of a sudden there's the kids playground and they're right there on that.
Okay.
Four of them. And they're the hotter, hottest, there's no, there's no shade.
Behind that pavilion? Ann, are they behind that pavilion? I don't remember, I don't ever remember seeing them. And I've been all through that park.
We know where the baseball fields are. They're on the right and the, and the.
The kids playground. Are they sitting behind the playground?
No, it's on the other side of the road.
Hiking plans to Canada last summer.
The baseball courts are over here and the courts are over here.
Hi guys, Mike Rush on the line here. I'm, I'm in my car, so I'm kind of driving right now, so I'm gonna put you on mute if you don't, unless you need something from me.
No, Mike, thank you, I appreciate you, so you're on the, on the call.
Thank you.
Oh, this is quiet, I wasn't even signing this.
Really?
Brett's probably happy.
Josh and Mike Rush. He's not, he won't be here. Oh, Julie's not coming, okay.
Jim, do you want these?
How you doing, Jim? Good, thanks.
All right, thank you, sir.
I sent you emails, I have three emails.
Yeah, yours is being, coming back is undeliverable.
Two came back undeliverable.
Your new, your new email, I don't know what, I don't know what's going on.
I do mini golf. I do mini golf, that's all. I've never.
And one went through?
I didn't give it.
That's really.
I've seen it, I've just never done it.
That's bothersome, because you're not the only one that said sometimes I drive through.
Well, I can't, I can't figure that one out.
I've had trouble with the one, but it's still, sometime, it'll show up like randomly, it'll come like weekly. Because I've had my bosses actually.
Well, it's after. That's great.
That mic is on Zoom, yep, everybody.
Julie's here.
Hey Julie. Four, six, yeah.
Oh, he is, okay.
Going into like one meeting with Faces Out?
I know. Faces Out, that's a, that's a good term, I'll have to remember that.
I was not here.
They're working on the paper, that's.
If I can pull them up on my phone. Weren't they in the back? Yeah, I didn't look at those.
That's unmuted.
Are you in red line?
Close to.
A little bit, yeah. About fifteen minutes from there.
Had a baseball state. Adams, Alaska. You ever eat at Allen's Eatery? Little, little small place again. Tea before you get too drunk. Right in Mooseberry.
No, I've eaten at a, it's called something Drive Thru. It's a short. It's Michael Rush.
Pardon me for that. Steve and Terry, if you don't mind, we asked that you sign in.
Hey John. Is there a name tag for it?
John, is there a name tag here?
You get a spot. You can sit right there, front and center.
Applicants better watch out. More of us than there are of them.
We've, we've land development planned, this is weaving entire land development process. It's pretty small, I didn't see any issues.
No, I think they have.
I was asking John. We'll have to ask some of that stuff. Well, it would be in a minute, but. That's what it said, right, if somebody has to come back in this afternoon. I think the record. No pressure.
So you gotta be somewhere at seven thirty, right? So you have to be somewhere at seven thirty?
The agenda is very short compared to usual, so. We're chattering about the record with an eight-minute meeting one time.
Was it seven and a half?
Seven and a half.
Ann voted that. Okay, fifteen seconds to go.
That's what we're aiming for.
I don't even remember.
Been given the challenge, so. So, six and a half is your goal.
From the time we do the pledge.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, in order to get this done before midnight, let's get started. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we even get into the approval of minutes, I'd like to take a minute to note that we have changes in our commission affected this meeting. And I think everybody knows Dennis Garinger resigned and then was appointed to the zoning hearing board alternate position. And therefore, we had three openings for alternates to the planning commission. And glad to announce that the supervisors appointed John Spangler, Josh Boltby and Mike Rush to join us as alternates. This evening, all the regulars are here, so none of you will get a chance to vote tonight. But your input is requested and don't be shy about asking questions or churning in. Okay, the first item on the agenda is approval from the last meeting, which was May twelfth. If anybody has any corrections, I'm ready for motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the May twelfth meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Decker, second by Mrs. Byrne, that we approve the minutes of the May twelfth meeting as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
An aye abstain.
Okay.
I'm just not here.
So it's six oh and one, okay.
I down absent Ann, Dwight and Julie.
Yeah, I abstain as well.
So we have a four to, four zero three?
Four zero three then, yes. Okay, the action item for this evening is the Sheets sketch plan and request for development waiver. If somebody would like to make the presentation, we're ready.
I'll start the presentation, my name's Steve Lynch, I'm an engineering and permits manager at Sheets. And I'm here today to request a waiver of the land development process for our project located at Columbia Avenue and Centerville Road. Basically, the store is fifteen years old, it was built back in two thousand and six. It's, you know, Sheets has evolved, our architecture, the, you know, the facilities that we have inside the buildings, the, you know, the flooring, the walls, everything evolves and changes over time. And so what we do is an older store like this is actually performing really well and that we want to keep. We give it a remodel. If you watch any of those home improvement shows on TV, this is a gut job with a small building addition out the front. But what it does, it's gonna. the front, but what it does is it's going to bring the new, the store up to our, kind of our new.
Steve, I apologize. You're gonna have to get a little bit closer. It's not picking you up. You can take it, you can, you can take it out too if you need to. Yeah, they both, they both work.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Should I start over again, or did you catch none of that?
You're the one that's doing the minutes, John.
I heard him the first time. He presented, I mean.
It's, wow, so, so it's, we're, we're gonna remodel the store to bring it up to our current standards. That includes all new equipment in the kitchens, the coolers, the, you know, the racks in the store. Everything gets refreshed and remodeled. And we also remodel the exterior of the building to look like our newer stores. It's about a two month process to construct this. And they actually do move pretty quick. I think two months is fast. But while we're remodeling the building, it makes sense to go through the rest of the site. Some of that pavement is, is concrete, it's old, it's cracked, it's deteriorated, it needs replaced. So if we're gonna shut the store down for any length of time, it makes sense to go through and replace all the paving and just take care of any other site issues that we have. But for the most part, the site remains identical, so the, the perimeter curbing stays the same. The stormwater management system stays the same. We're not changing it or altering it in any way. And so I think for those reasons, you know, it makes sense for us to, you know, request a waiver from the land development process. I've completed several of these remodel projects in other municipalities. The most recent would be in Dairy Township. The Sheet Store outside of Hershey Park. It's, they finished construction, they're getting ready to reopen that store, but typically, the way the process works is it's more of a building permit driven review and approval process because the site work itself really isn't changing much at all. So that's my kind of overview and I've got our engineering consultant here that can handle any technical questions that you might have.
So would one of you just go through with what physically you're doing to change the, you know, shape or size of the building, whatever?
So, you can see it on screen, everybody's looking up, but I'll point to this one. Right in the front, that gray hatch partially demolished the building portion. So that portion will actually be removed. And then if you can flip to the site plan, it's kind of like in an angle now. When we look at the site plan, you can see that it's more squared off in the front. It's a total building addition of about seven hundred and seventy-five square feet. You can see where the, kind of that triangular pieces out front and everything's just kind of getting more squared off in the front. Because that's happening, we're actually going to be pushing the parking spaces, what are shown here is eight through sixteen, a little bit closer to the canopy. We did lose one parking space on the left side, and that was to make sure that the drive aisle between that last pump and space, what would be eight on this plan, so there's enough drive aisle width through there. So we did remove one parking space on that side. We had gone from four handicap parking spaces down to two, but it's come to our attention that we're gonna need to add a third parking space, handicap parking space back onto the plan. So we'll be modifying the plan to accommodate that as it's an ordinance requirement. The two handicap spaces on the right, it's spaces seventeen and eighteen that are shown now, are actually van accessible. Both are identified as that on the plan, so we'll just be adding one additional space for handicap purposes to the plan. As Steve mentioned, kind of the perimeter curbing and everything else is staying put. The only real modification is that front and kind of just bumping everything out. We will have some re-grading associated with that because we want to make sure that we're meeting ADA accessibility requirements, as well as Sheets actually standards are more strict for, for access to the store. So they actually like flatter slopes and, and kind of the flush curb and everything going from the parking spaces into the front of the store. So we'll be modifying the grading in the front and along the sides to accommodate the Sheet standards for grading as well as obviously ADA accessibility requirements. In terms of the remainder of the site improvements, the fuel station positions are going to remain as is, so they won't change the number of those. The canopy will stay in the same location as it is. I believe it's gonna get an, an update as well. It'll get the more modified, like stone wraps on the columns, but the canopy itself will stay in place. That won't be modified. The fueling positions, the pumps will be removed and replaced in kind, as well as the piping that goes from the underground storage tank to. So all of that again will be replaced in the existing trenches that it's in now. Other than that, the stormwater basin, we did submit the plans and received some comments from Scott Haynes, who I saw is, is on this chili. There were some recommendations from the original approved design of the store to what was actually constructed, and we noticed that there was an orifice on the basin that wasn't installed appropriately when the store was originally built. So this plan actually rectifies that inconsistency, and we're calling out for a little bit of a modification to the basin in order to make it match kind of the original design that was proposed back in nine. Back then. So we've addressed with our plan submission, all of the recommendations that were requested in Scott Haynes' review letter as well. I think that was all of the items I want. Oh, one other item to, that I did want to mention is that with the revised plan that you're seeing here today, we actually have a reduction of about three hundred and twenty square feet of impervious area. So this does not propose any additional impervious area. It actually reduces it a little bit, mostly because that parking space on the end was removed. But nothing else will be increased in terms of the impervious areas.
So the, on the prior sheet, the sort of flag shape was, is being demolished, but is it being rebuilt plus this dark area? The, the, the dark area there now is the new, the new perimeter of the building.
That's just outlining the additional building.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have any additional questions for us? I think between Steve and I, we covered kind of the extent of the, the projects. As we mentioned, it's, it's a minimal building addition with some grading just associated with kind of bumping that out. And then whole modifications, but everything else is pretty much what we would consider a maintenance item at this point, were they.
Like I mentioned before, you know, we're gonna close the building down for two months. It makes sense while the store is closed. Get into the site and take care of any site related issues we're having, old worn out, you know, concrete, paving, as she mentioned before, the piping from the oil tanks to the dispensers. Take that out, put new back in. So it's, it's really a, a renovation of the existing site, just to take care of some of these maintenance items that we normally can't take care of. The store is still a twenty-four hour day, so it's kind of hard to get in there. You do a lot of this for a piece deal, doesn't make a lot of sense. It's cleaner. To close off the driveways and do it all at once.
Does that include pressure testing the tanks? The storage tanks?
The tanks do get tested. I can probably refer to our petroleum department, but I, I do know that they inspect those tanks to make sure that they're adequate. I think the original concept was to actually remove those tanks in an earlier version, and they inspect them and detecify, so they're just gonna replace the pipe. And at the end of the day, you know, once the project is finished, it's gonna look like a brand new Sheet Store, but it's just gonna be the same footprint that previously approved back in two thousand and six.
Increase in buildings reference change the quantity of the floors?
No.
John, could you just fill us in on the process that's taken place so far because the comments were that Scott has taken a look at the plan and picked up a couple of things maybe? Is there anything further to be done?
That, that's, that's been the extent of it, Jim. We had some brief conversations with Terry and Steve a couple of weeks ago, and then we moved forward. They did do a, an escrow reduction, which we need to work on how we're gonna handle the rest of that from the, the O-six plan. But as part of that escrow reduction, Scott and his team were able to do some stormwater inspections and work towards what Terry was talking about. So other than that, they're.
So that.
You're up to speed?
So Scott's, Scott's review wouldn't have taken place had that not been a reduction in escrow request?
It made sense to do it with that, so we killed two birds with one stone.
But if they didn't have to do that as part of this waiver, Scott wouldn't have looked at things like that. Okay, that's what I'm trying to say. And then I know we've done this in the past several times, and I just would like to have a little refresher on what's actually gonna happen because part of our recommendation for these waivers usually is accompanied by a, a note that says, if you want to do this five years from now, you've already had your free pass. Okay, so where does that get noted? Is there a, is that added to the plan? Or does somebody have to remember about the minutes from this meeting?
If the planning commission wishes to add that to their motion, we can take that up to the board of supervisors, and yes, if it, if it was part of their motion, we would ask that a, a plan note be added to any future plan and be tied to a condition of the building permit.
Yeah, I, I, I'm pretty sure we've done that in all cases that I, that I can remember, John. So I, I think we definitely ought to have it with something of this scope, because this, this is probably one of the, now, it's not the minimus, like a couple of the other ones were. This one is, you know, pretty decent square footage.
I would say, I would, I would argue that this is the minimus. They're actually reducing impervious area. Their stormwater facilities are built adequately.
The scope of the job as far as changing pavement, changing store building, whatever.
Understood.
It would be my recommendation that we had, that a note be added to the plan. It is to the plan, right? That's.
There will, this is a sketch plan. They're requesting a waiver of land development. So the only thing we would have, and Dwight and I had a brief conversation before the meeting began, is to request an as-built plan be done after the project's completed and recorded.
Okay. Yeah.
And I would, I would ask if Steve and Terry, would that be something, would that be a condition that would, you guys would be amenable to?
Yes, we can do that, and certainly too, on submitting the building permit application. One of the things that we always include is a set of site plans that we've submitted previously for the waiver request. So, so these, these documents you see before you get a patch of the building permit.
And with that, with, if, if we go the route with the as-built plan, we would tie that to the certificate of occupancy for the building.
That gives a record, you know, it's recorded, so future applications can see what was approved and there's no misunderstanding.
And, and Jim, to your point, we could add that note to the as-built plan if, if the planning commission.
Yeah, wherever it's appropriate, that it actually gets recorded somewhere and not just in meeting minutes. That's, I, I would never be able to go back and find it at that point. John, is there anybody else on Zoom you think that has a input, questions on this? Can't tell.
I don't know if Mike's still driving and has this on mute, if he has any questions, but other than that, I don't have any questions in chat.
No, no, I think, this is Mike Rush. I think the as-built, adding that note is a, is a, is a good idea.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So if there's a, no further discussion or questions, I guess we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommended the supervisors' approval of the land development waiver for the Sheets project with the condition that a as-built plan is recorded after completion with the note referencing the, I don't know, Jim said it better than I did, referencing the, the pass, the one-time pass that we're granting this site for the waiver of the land development.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of the land development waiver for the Sheetz project, subject to the applicant providing fee in lieu of contributions, as well as the addition of a note, note on the as-built plans. Are referencing the fact that this is a, a one-time waiver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous, seven to zero. Okay, good luck.
Thanks, your time. In the top five.
All right, is there any other new business, John?
No, sir.
Any old business?
No, sir.
Any project report?
It's been, it's been fairly light. Seven oh one is moving forward. They're gonna be recording the plan this week, barring any setbacks. It's gonna take some coordination to get one of the supervisors in here to sign the plans so they can record them. And then, once the plans are recorded, it will issue the building permit for seven oh one, Stony Battery Road. They hope to begin next week. Seven ninety-one, there's no new movement on that. Six oh one right now, the shell is up, but there's a, it's not finished for a tenant yet. I believe they're looking for or marketing it for an end user. Brookside, the Brookside Sheets is actually well underway and it's moving pretty quick. Along with Brookside, we heard from the developer that they're going to be looking to record the Phase Six plan in the next couple of weeks, which is the Enterprise Zone Industrial Warehouse Distribution Facility. Other than that, it's, it's been pretty quiet. Not a whole lot is going on. We're seeing an uptick, a huge uptick in residential activity, but a lot of the commercial is kind of on hold right now. Yeah, a lot of the stuff, exactly. A lot of the stuff that we're seeing has already come through the process.
I assume, but you may want to check if there's any public comment on Zoom. There's nobody here, that's for sure.
I did have something if there's no one else on Zoom.
Sure, go ahead.
I was, and this might not be the appropriate forum for it, but I was wondering if maybe for a future meeting, we might be able to, and maybe a different area of the township is somewhere to raise that. But look into the ordinance for residential properties, keeping chickens, just a couple chickens in the backyard. I don't, maybe this has already been, been pretty well ranked out, I don't know.
It has been a very hot button topic about two, two and a half years ago.
Okay.
Came, came through about the same time the wireless facility ordinance did, and it got shot down with a fury, along with horse barns for transportation, a couple of other things. Are you, are you asking if that would be permitted, or do you have a, an issue with neighbors having chickens?
No, I would be pro chicken, pro chicken. Was it more from local residents being against it, or more from, from members of different commissions?
No, it was the residents. There, there was, they did not want the, they don't mind living next to a farm. It's just the, too much of an ag presence in residential areas was just not appealing.
I think there was also something about just disease control too.
I don't, I don't really specifically, our ordinance right now requires them to be, they have to be, have some sort of. They can't just free range. No, they do. That's, that's how we, that's how we get most of our complaints.
It did get, we were dealing with the, the Amish community wanting to build horse barns.
I knew that was a discussion. I didn't know the chickens were there.
Same conversation. If I remember the ordinance is if you're in the ag zone.
They are not considered pets.
Yeah, I think, I, just from looking into it, yeah.
Is, the ag zone's the only one you can have chickens?
Ag and ag holding.
And ag holding.
So as, as part of that, Julie, we did update our definition for livestock and pets to make sure it's clear that chickens, pigs, cows, horses are all considered livestock, whichever.
I ran trying to find a loophole.
Good luck. Okay, anything else?
Well, if I, if I may, right now. Well, if I, if I may, right now, July's meeting is, I don't have anything for July's meeting as of right now, and I am not gonna be here in July. I will actually be getting married that day, so. Barring, barring any issues, they, if there will, is a meeting, then Cindy will probably be in my stead, and Scott will be on Zoom, but I, I don't anticipate the need to have a planning commission meeting in July. I will keep you all updated.
Where are you going?
We're gonna go down to Virginia Beach for a couple of days, and then our official honeymoon is gonna be in November. We're going on a cruise to the Caribbean.
All right. Now that our third ordinate has joined us. The meeting is adjourned. Yeah. Good, good to see you.
You're still on, you're still on to me.
Butt down.
Tomorrow night, no.
It's gonna be fun.
We're dealing with a couple of issues right now that is just.
Hi, I'm Julie.
A wedding, her dad's in the hospital with COVID and it's not good. My fiance. Her, he's sixty-six. He'll be sixty, seventy July second, and. Little for two weeks.